Are we, are we ready to start? Everybody ready? Okay, it's 7:00 PM. I'd like to call the meeting to order. The board met in closed session at 6:00 PM to discuss matters that fall into the following categories that are exceptions to the Illinois Open Meetings Act. And one personnel matters, C1, specific personnel appointment, employment compensation, performance and dismissals, C8, school building safety, student matters exception, C1, legal matters, C1, specific personnel employment, four closed session minutes, exception, C21. At this time, I would like to ask for motion to go into open session.
Motion.
Motion of Mr. Riddle, second by who was that? By Ms. Hannah.
Ms. Fabian.
Yes.
Ms. Hannah.
Yes.
Ms. Lenzing.
Yes.
Mr. McBride. Ms. Ramirez.
Yes.
Mr. Riddle.
Yes.
President Rodriguez.
Yes, motion carries. We are now in open session. Next item on the agenda, Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to ask Ms. Schaefer if she would please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is President's Report. Just a couple of things I'd like to mention. This Sunday, I attended the Bravo Wa Keegan, what did they call it, Broadway and Brunch event that they had in Lake Forest to raise money, it was a fundraiser to raise money for Bravo Wa Keegan programs, which are, have been providing a lot of opportunities in the field of music for our students for years, providing low cost or free instruments, training, summer camps, and it was, I was there with Mr. Riddle and Board Member Fabian. So it was a wonderful event and glad I was able to attend that. I happened to see something in the Tribune this Sunday that caught my attention. And I don't know if any of you saw that. Nobody saw this? Caitlin's Kitchen.
Oh, I did.
Caitlin's Kitchen.
Absolute.
The John Lewis Middle School Teaching Farm in Wa Keegan, Illinois begins build of Caitlin's Kitchen, and I'm gonna read this, kind of a long article, but I think it's worth sharing with you. With support from Wa Keegan Community Unit School District 60, the friends and family of Caitlin Schaumberger and philanthropies in Lake County, Illinois, a 24 by 64 fully functional modular demonstration kitchen and classroom will be built adjacent to a greenhouse and sustainable food forest on the grounds of the first school-based teaching farm in Lake County. Named in honor of Mrs. Schaumberger, a dedicated and nurturing second grade teacher in the Wa Keegan School District who passed away at the age of 25 due to complications from COVID-19, Caitlin's Kitchen will support expansion of the botany food education program for students and the greater Wa Keegan community. By weaving food education into everyday classroom learning, the teaching farm helps students make connections between food, wellness, and community. Students are empowered to make informed food choices and can identify the benefits of nutrient-dense foods on their minds and bodies. The students engage in all aspects of the farm-to-table process, and the produce they grow is sold at a local grocery store or donated to a community organization for distribution to families in need. Ms. Schaumberger was passionate about teaching her students the importance of preparing and eating nutritious meals, and the kitchen will ensure her legacy lives on by providing students and families with a place to learn invaluable life skills and create healthy meals from food grown in the greenhouse and food forest. This year, 7th and 8th graders continue to utilize makeshift stations in the greenhouse to prepare homemade crab rangoon, Asian chicken wraps, churros, garlic scape pesto, raspberry, chia jam, fruit smoothies, and much more. Caitlin's dream of creating an equitable food future for young people in Wa Keegan will become a reality as students and their families develop a deeper understanding of how our food system impacts not only personal health, but various aspects of societal, environmental, and economic dependencies. Contributions in support of Caitlin's Kitchen and the Teaching Farm can be sent to John 8 Lewis Middle School, Caitlin's Kitchen, 600 South Lewis Avenue, Wa Keegan, Illinois. I thought this was really nice. It's a beautiful project and I'm just happy to see it's getting the exposure out of this project. And we are hoping to have a meeting the 29th, I think, a week from tonight with, that's a meeting with Dr. Friedman, is that correct, to begin the process of goal-setting for the superintendent and setting up the evaluation process, and we hope to get this on schedule. It's been late the last couple of years. We're hoping from this point forward, we're gonna be able to get this going and get it happening on time every year. And that's all that I have to say right now. Next item is Student Board Member Report.
Good evening, families. Is it on? Community members and members of the Board Education. I would like to begin by sincerely thanking the Board for granting me this incredible opportunity and experience I am truly grateful for. Serving on the Board has helped me grow in both, in many ways, both personally and professionally, it straightened my public speaking and communication skills, taught me the value of leadership principles, and most importantly, gave me a voice to speak up and represent others. Throughout this experience, I learned the importance of listening to diverse perspectives and finding common ground to drive, to drive a positive change. I had the privilege for advocating for student needs, addressing concerns, and working alongside staff to help improve our school community. I also participated in the school's Wellness Committee where I helped create an anti-vaping posters to promote a healthier environment for our students here in Wa Keegan. This opportunity has shaped me into a more confident, respectful, and solution-oriented leader. Once again, thank you for this meaningful experience. I will carry these lessons with me for years to come.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, the next item, I think we are, are gonna postpone this little bit. Where's Mr. Al Jackus? You hear? Okay, understand that, yeah, that everybody's not here yet for the appointment and swearing-in of the new student school board members, and we're gonna move forward to... Yes, we're getting to special recognition and presentations, the Junta's Scholarship Presentation. Juntos, is that juntos? Juntos. Yes.
All right, good evening, everyone. My name is Elizabeth Marrero, and this is Jesus Uribe. We are two of the Board of Directors of Juntos, which is not-for-profit here in Wa Keegan, and we're very excited, so thank you for allowing this. This is our first time ever doing a scholarship, and I do wanna say thank you to Carolina Fabian because you have guided me so much in, you know, how do I do a scholarship? How do I do the fund? Like, how do I select the students? Like, help me because I, I don't know. So I wanna say thank you. I really appreciate it for answering my calls or texts. I know we're all busy, but wanna say thank you for that. But thank you all for joining us. We, the purpose of this is to do, or the award ceremony for Juntos. We created the fund to select three students here in Wa Keegan High School, and we did have a little bit of help with some sponsors, but most of the money came from the parade that we did last year from Viva la Independencia Parade. And one of our goals was, besides doing the parade and celebrating our culture and tradition, also to invest back in our community, and how can I help my community, my people, especially when we, we do have a high rate of low-income families, and I believe education is very important because nobody can take that away from you. And if I can help a little bit, we can help a little bit, students to be able to achieve their goals, whether it is, you know, to complete a course, if they can get into a four-year scholarship, or, you know, to help them. So that's basically how we, we basically started. So we wanna say thank you to a few of our sponsors. Those were people, Net Guard Investment and Ann Taylor, they did specifically said, "We want this money to go for the scholarship." So we wanna say that, and then the rest of the funds, we got it from the participants from last year. So you can go to the next slide. So the first student, it's Eber Moreno. He couldn't make it today here. He did excuse himself, but I still wanted it to make sure I honor him, and we will send a certificate to him. He is planning on going to the College of Lake County to study psychology, and he just started working evenings, so that's why obviously he's not able to be here. But you can go. The next student is Lynette Ventura. So she is a high school student, and she will be going to University of Urbana-Champaign. So if Lynette, Lynette is here today, you can come over. I wanna say thank you for your shipments and everything, and we're very glad you're here, you know, to be able to study. Do you wanna say anything?
I wanna thank the Juntos whole team for, like, believing in me and giving me all the opportunity, obviously, and just to my community for being very open to the decision of giving back to the community in general and our studies as future leaders.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Lynette. The next student is Sitlali Zamora. She will be going to Carthage College, and she will be studying diagnostic medical sonar gruffer. I think I said that right? So Sitlali, if you can come in.
I just, I just wanna say thank you to everybody that was part of this and for helping me for my future in college, and, yeah, just thank you.
Ms. Zamora, the Carthage College, that's my alma mater.
Okay, but ILL's representing.
And you, look, they give you an excellent education, so go there and be in the prestigious group. Because that's where you'll be.
Yes.
Thank you. It was a very hard decision, of course, selecting the students. I wish I was able to provide, you know, the word to everyone. They, they were selected because of their remarkable hard work and commitment to excellence involved in and out of the classrooms, and their story really inspired us, and their determination reminded us about the power of education to transform lives and community. So thank you so much for being here. We're very proud of you guys. We wish you the best, good luck. We are also taking a little bit of time. We are also gonna be coordinating this year parade as well, the Viva la Independencia. It's scheduled for Sunday, September 14, 2025, and it will start on Botrick, just like the regular route on Washington, Botrick and Washington, ending in downtown county. Right now, the registrations are open. I do invite all of the board members to participate. I think last year, only one person I saw there, but you guys are more than welcome to come in. Please join us. It's very fun. The students, they're also welcome to come in. I think they already have the, the school band. They're already registered, and I'm just waiting for the ROTC when, obviously, the schools starts. I'm pretty sure I'm gonna start seeing that, but hopefully I'll see you guys there. And if you have any questions, please reach out to us. This is the parade route, just so you guys can kinda have an idea there, but thank you so much.
Thank you.
Can I just have the students come out? So I just wanna take a picture with the, and the families too, come in.
And I just wanna add thank you because I did attend last year, and it was very, very, very well organized, being how many entries you have and how many people you have out there, so thank you for organizing.
Squeeze in, squeeze in.
Squeeze in.
Squeeze in.
I can't, I can't take another personal search.
Let's not.
I'm not trying.
I wanted to jump the line.
Thank you. No, thank you.
Okay, are we ready?
All right, now you can go back up to seven. I believe we're good.
Mr. Al Jackus, are we ready to do the?
Yeah.
We are ready, okay. Next item on the agenda is the appointment and swearing-in of the 2025-2026 student board members. Are they here?
Yes.
Okay.
Bring them up, bring them up.
We gotta vote on it.
Okay.
We gotta vote on it first.
I know it's out, but up is obviously where we have to.
Yeah, I'm gonna stand up. Okay.
We need to vote. That's how it works.
Okay.
We need to vote.
We have, I just wanna make sure that they're both here first.
They are.
Okay, they're both here. Thank you. Okay, the item on the agenda is the appointment and swearing-in of the 2025 student board member. And the recommended action is that Board of Education appoint Wa Keegan High School Rising Sophomore Frankie Jacobo to the Washington Campus and Rising Senior Treasurer Allen to the Washington Campus to serve as the student's board members for the 2025-2026 school year. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion?
Motion by Ms. Hannah, second by Ms. Lenzing. Do we have any discussion on this motion?
No.
We should.
I have a comment. I, I just wanna say you both did a really great job with your interview process. You have a lot of great ideas, and I'm excited that you're wanting to get the perspective of your peers, whether you agree, or maybe it's slightly different. So we really look forward to working with you and seeing how well you excel in this position.
And I'd like to, I'd like to say I was not involved, unfortunately, in the interviews, but I do trust my board colleagues, and if they chose you all, then you are the quality that we are looking for. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Fabian.
Sorry, just on behalf of the Board, a little bit about the process. So the students were selected on the basis of their applications, their recommendations from teachers, and then they were interviewed by us, the Board. All the students that were interviewed were absolutely impressive, and we were so proud of all that they have accomplished. We expect that they will continue to impress us, but the two present here today were very firm in their desire to be the voice of their school communities, and they dedic, and they're committed to dedicating their time to uplifting those voices. So I personally am excited to work with you both, and I believe the rest of the Board shares the same sentiment, so welcome aboard.
Thank you. Just wanna say, it was a very impressive evening for me. The, all four candidates we interviewed are outstanding. It was a very difficult decision, but the two of you stood out. You were really very impressive, and we just liked your attitude and just the fact that you both seemed like you were really going places. So we're very, very proud to have you here. One of the toughest things that I ever had to do was talk to the other two candidates to let them know that they were not selected, but wow, they were, they're just outstanding candidates also. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna come down to the podium.
Can I say something?
Yeah, oh, yes.
I just wanna say to you, you are there to help us out. We're not in the buildings. You guys are. Don't be scared to challenge us about things that you see that you need, that needs to be changed. That's why we got you here, for you to help us out, because we don't see what's going on over in those, in those schools. You guys do, so challenge us. Whatever you see that's wrong, please don't hesitate to tell us. We can, we here to help make those changes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now we need to call the vote.
Yes.
Full call vote, please.
Ms. Fabian.
Absolutely.
Ms. Hannah.
Yes.
Ms. Lenzing.
Yes.
Mr. McBride.
Yes.
Ms. Ramirez.
Yes.
Mr. Riddle.
Yes.
President Rodriguez.
Yes, motion carries. Congratulations. Hello? Testing, are we on? Good. I'd like you to face, face the podium, and we're gonna do the oath together, both of you, please.
Oh, Mr. Rodriguez, pause. I'm sure this is gonna be in the paper, so it's Mr. Hayden.
Oh, yes.
Give him your good.
All right. What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna say the oath. I'd like you to repeat after me, okay? I, Treasurer Allen. I, Frankie Jacobo. Have, having been appointed to the position, both of you, of student board member, Board of Education, Community Unit School District Number 60, Unit School District 60, in the city of Wa Keegan, Illinois, in the county of Lake, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully perform my duties as a student board member, and will conduct myself in a professional manner. I further swear that I will uphold my duties as a student board member by attending Board of Education meetings and faithfully representing my fellow students to the best of my ability. I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion of my fellow board members and others who seek a hearing before the Board, while respecting the privacy of students and employees. I shall recognize that I am a non-voting member of the Board. However, I am encouraged to lend my opinion to Board discussions, and I shall remain respectful to community members, my fellow students, my teachers, and all district employees. And I will not attempt to use my position to exercise influence in matters unrelated to my duties as a student board member. Congratulations. Ms. Fannabrook, what is the procedure then? They will be seated at the next meeting, is that correct? Or they're gonna be seated right now? We're gonna invite you back right now.
All right.
Participate in the meeting, your first meeting. We don't have chairs. Make it work.
Yeah, they have an extra chair over there.
Yeah, they have an extra chair. Cake for our outgoing student board member. Who made the motion?
I, I did.
Ms. Lenzing, second.
Lenzing first, Riddle second.
Riddle, second by Mr. Riddle. All in favor?
Aye.
Abolled, motion carries. We are now in recess.
Cake. Cake.
Is there a call?
There is a jury.
Yes. I motioned, Riddle second.
My motion, Riddle second.
Pride, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We are now in open session. Next item on the agenda is approval of the closed session minutes. Is that?
I don't think we can. We didn't.
Yes, we have.
We didn't review that. We didn't do it in closed session, so I don't think we can.
No, we did not.
Excuse me.
No, we did not.
These are minutes that the board previously approved. They're not the closed session from today.
Thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome.
These are not the ones that were not closed session.
Board President, I'd make a motion that we approve nine A, B, and C. Everybody was here for that?
For all meetings.
Those three. No, A, B, and C, Ms. Hannah was not here for D.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve the minutes from A, B, and C. Second. Second by Ms. Lenzing. Any discussion on the motion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Fabian.
Yes.
Ms. Hannah.
Yes.
Ms. Lenzing.
Yes.
Mr. McBride.
Yes.
Ms. Ramirez.
Yes.
Mr. Riddle.
Yes.
President Rodriguez.
Yes, motion carries. Minutes are approved. Item 90, approval of minutes of the special open session meeting.
Motion to approve.
Twenty twenty-five.
Nine, nine D. Yes, motion to approve. That was the minutes for the selection of the board.
All right, let me just read what we approved first before we move forward.
Okay.
Approval of nine A, which was the closed session minutes. Nine B, approval of minutes of the special open session meeting of June 23rd, 2025. And nine C, approval of minutes for the regular open session meeting of June 24th, 2025. That was motion, seconded, and approved. Next item is gonna be nine D, approval of minutes for the special open session meeting for July 9th, 2025. Did we have a motion?
Yes.
Motion by Mr. Riddle.
I'll approve those. That was the minutes. I mean, those were the minutes of the special meeting where we chose the student board members.
Right. Motion by Mr. Riddle, second by?
I made the second.
By Ms. Lenzing?
I didn't second the D, but I can.
Oh.
Second.
Second by Ms. Lenzing. Any discussion on this motion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Fabian.
Yes.
Ms. Hannah.
Yes.
Ms. Lenzing.
Yes.
Mr. McBride.
Yes.
Ms. Ramirez.
Yes.
Mr. Riddle.
Yes.
President Rodriguez.
Yes, motion carries. Minutes are approved. Item 10, opportunity for public comment. We have Mr. Ray Vukovich.
Good evening. I'd like to start off on a positive note and welcome back Michael Rodriguez, old Michael Rodriguez that I've known from years back. He knows that my wife and I have avoided him every election with the exception of this last one. And after he was sworn in, sworn in as president, he reached out to us numerous times and took us out to meet and just talk about issues that we have with the district. And we appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
Just a couple of weeks ago, I reached out to him and brought something to his attention just down the street, a fence that was in disrepair. And within minutes, he responded to me that he'd take care of it. And within days, he responded that it had been taken care of. For that, I thank you. Now, shouldn't have to go to the board president to get something like that done. This is a situation that was seven blocks up the street. People in this building drive past it. It was that way for three to four weeks. Now, it's unsightly, and I spent plenty of years in government in the insurance business. I know the red tape that's there. But more importantly, the safety hazard that was there. There should have been red tape or barricades up, nothing. The bottom of the fence, it bowed out halfway across the sidewalk. It was a trip hazard, a liability hazard. There are people in this district that should be held accountable, and that particular department you need to look at. As I went back to double-check that fence, I realized that the previous board had put in a new parking lot there for several hundred thousand dollars, and they had to cut an opening in to put the driveway in, and they just pulled back some of the fencing. For that kind of money, they should have trimmed it off and make it look decent. The same department, half a million dollars at the Brookside campus when they put in a parking lot, and they didn't put in handicap parking space. You know, you give these people contracts and bonuses, and they're not doing their jobs. The hell with all these extra goals. Make sure they're doing their basic job. That's what we need in this community. And I hope that the people at the very top make sure that the people are there looking around the community as they drive around. Every school is their responsibility, and they should make sure that things are safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vukovich. Okay. We get the agenda back on the screen? Thank you. Next item on the agenda, consent agenda academics? Do we have anything? Consent agenda operations? We have nothing. Thirteen purchases and contracts. Thirteen A, approval of purchase of second step K through five bullying curriculum.
It is the recommendation of the administration that the Board of Education authorize the superintendent to approve the purchase of the second step K through five bullying prevention curriculum for grades K through five, which supports tier one social emotional learning and aligns with district roles for proactive student support. The value of this item is seventy-six thousand, two hundred, sixty-six dollars.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Riddle.
Second.
Second by Ms. Fabian. Any discussion on this motion?
Yes.
Ms. Hannah.
Just a couple of questions. Is this in compliance with the state law that the district had to implement the bullying curriculum and policy? Is that what this is?
Yes, ma'am.
That's what this is?
Yes, ma'am.
And so we are now in compliance with the state law?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Number two question. Is this is gonna be the first year?
We're implementing with the second step, with the SCL that they're already getting. We're adding the bullying curriculum component to it.
Okay.
So it meets the standard.
Okay, okay, okay. And so are the? How is this going to be rolled out with the teachers?
So it's?
And?
I'm sorry.
And hopefully, there's been a conversation and collaboration with the teachers and the union for this buy.
So the SCL second step, they're already getting that. That's already implemented in their day. We're just now adding that bullying component through SCL curriculum. So they're already getting the SCL curriculum. We're adding the bullying part to the SCL curriculum. So it's just gonna be another lesson that they're getting within their SCL second step already. So it's nothing new. It's something we're just adding that bullying curriculum aspect. So instead of them just getting strictly SCL, we're now adding that bullying component to it. So they're gonna learn about what to do if they're being bullied, what they need to say if they're a bystander. They're gonna get all of that component inside of that curriculum that's already been given to them through SCL.
Ms. Fabian.
So I just think words matter when we're talking about this curriculum. If we can continue to call it anti-bullying or bullying prevention, because it sounds like we're gonna teach kids how to bully. So if we get used to the wording anti-bullying curriculum.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, it is the anti-bullying curriculum component to that. So the students are already getting SCL. So now we're adding that additional component to ensure that every student is getting it.
Ms. Lenzing.
I just want to make sure the shared language is extending into this. So this program's definition of bullying is in alignment with the district's definition, whether it may be continued and pervasive or extreme in one instance.
Yes, so the goal of this bullying curriculum is actually to teach them what bullying is. And that is to understand that it is severe and pervasive by our standards. So they will add that component to it.
But there are instances where bullying can happen in one if it's severe enough.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's in the curriculum as well.
That's what they told me.
Okay.
Cyberbullying, all of it.
Yes, ma'am. I made sure the cyberbullying was included in that because that's one of the big components that we see a lot.
When you say cyberbullying, are you talking about cell phones?
It could be social media, cell phone, Snapchat. Anything electronic. Google meets. All of those components are under cyberbullying.
Sorry, just one more quick question, and is it bilingual?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Riddle.
Yeah, Board President, I did a little research on it. Two in second step elementary anti-bullying program looks to be very effective. There was several studies that were done, independent studies, and they found it to reduce bullying by at least twenty to twenty-three percent in the schools in which it was implemented. So if it's implemented properly, it's gonna do some good. They also said it teaches kindness and empathy, which I thought was important.
Yes.
And they also said that is very effective besides teaching the children how to deal with bullies. Teaching them empathy and kindness helps.
Yes, that's our goal.
I think it's great, and I'm glad you're doing it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other?
Yep, I have a quick one. Just on that point with the reduction by twenty percent. From my understanding, since I've been on the board, we've had zero instances of bullying reported to us.
We've had bullying incidents reported.
When we get the reports to the board, though, it's always been, it's been zero.
The new one.
Miss Reed.
No, the one for the twenty-four, twenty-five, you'll see that there was incidents of bullying, and they were addressed immediately. You haven't gotten that report yet.
Okay.
Yes. But for this past year, yes.
From my perspective, it's accurate, but there's upcoming information that we have found bullying within the district.
Yes, ma'am, and it was dealt with accordingly.
Okay.
Ms. Hannah.
My last question.
Oh.
And so the? They're gonna teach the students what bullying is. Is there a component in there to clarify or teach and administer what bullying is?
In the second step curriculum, it is, but it isn't, if that makes sense. So it is geared towards the students. The staff, I'm working on that right now for staff and identifying exactly what bullying is and ensuring that they are reading our bullying policy to ensure that they understand the definition of bullying. Just because we use the word bullying doesn't actually mean it's actually bullying. So we have to make sure that we're defining that for our staff and our students and our families.
That's right, yeah. They have and where.
Yes, ma'am. With the new bullying mandate, we have to ensure that everybody understands what the definition of bullying is.
Okay, now we're just gonna worm.
Are you guys gonna be doing a lot of not just reading illustration too what bullying is? Just because they read that, one thing. But understanding and seeing another, are you guys gonna be doing a lot of illustration?
With second step, they have that component where they can answer questions to ensure that they're understanding the concept of bullying. So there is a component where they teach and learn in conversation. So we need the kids to ensure that they have that in the curriculum.
Role.
Yeah, you don't wanna role play, but maybe vignettes to observe and comment on. Yeah, I don't want them to role play the bullying.
It's a research-based curriculum.
Yes.
That being said, it will have what's best for students to be able to understand.
On their grade level, yes.
I think too, because there may be different understanding of what bullying is, I think maybe what I would like to see is collaborating with the face department so parents are also aware so that they can better advocate for their kids on, is this bullying? Is it something else? And they can clearly work with the school to address whatever needs the students are experiencing.
Yes, ma'am.
And provide resource.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Fabian.
Yes.
Ms. Hannah. Ms. Lenzing.
Yes.
Mr. McBride.
Yes.
Ms. Ramirez.
Yes.
Mr. Riddle.
Yes.
President Rodriguez.
Yes, motion carries. Item thirteen B, approval to purchase NWA growth assessments.
It is the recommendation of the administration that the Board of Education authorize the superintendent or her designee to approve the purchase of NWA MAP growth assessments for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year in the amount of a hundred and eight thousand, one hundred dollars.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Riddle.
Second.
Second by Ms. Fabian. Any discussion on this motion? Yes, Ms. Lenzing, Ms. Hannah.
Ms. Hannah can go first, and then I'll go after Ms. Hannah.
I'm just, is this like a continuation purchase superintendent? Where we have to buy this every year?
Yes, ma'am, it's a renewal.
Okay, because see, it doesn't say renewal. It just says to approve purchase. And if it's a renewal, it needs to be termed that way so that the board is approving the appropriate thing. Because it doesn't say renewal.
I do know that an email was sent to the board in regards to this coming back on the agenda, I believe. I don't know, maybe a week or two ago. I can't actually say when the item went out. But this is a renewal for NWA. I can't actually say when the, um, item went out, but this is a renewal for, um, N W A, N W E A to be utilized in our district.
Right.
Um, so within that email, it was brought up that there were discussions with the teachers, um, and our building leadership on the frequency of testing. I would like a little more context on that. Um, I personally think our kids are overtested, um, especially when it comes to the middle of year data that we get, the constant, um, tagline to that is, it's not fully accurate because it's measuring on things we haven't covered yet. And to me, that's a waste of our, our time. It's a waste of our kids' instructional time, it's a waste of our teachers' and administrators' time. So I just wanna have more, um, insight as to what those conversations were around the frequency of testing that we're doing.
Absolutely. Good evening, Board President, Superintendent, members of the board, community. Um, Dr. Jonathan, please chime in if there's anything that you would like to also add as this is, um, well within your real house, of course. Um, the conversations that we had with our union and our teachers, um, around the assessment calendar, um, really piggyback both of the agenda items that you're seeing tonight on N W A and iReady. The conversations around, they're both considered benchmark assessments, and so we wanted to make sure that when we're looking at using the iReady curriculum resources that we use through our teaching and learning, um, team, that we are using those resources in alignment with the iReady data that comes with the iReady benchmark. And so we, we wanted to decrease the amount of assessments, especially at benchmark, as you mentioned, beginning of year, middle of year, and end of year. And so instead of having to take both assessments, um, both N W A map and iReady simultaneous, especially at our middle school level, um, we had a lot of conversations related to that. So we've decreased some of the tier one, our curriculum-based measures, so there's less testing, um, um, through the teaching and learning tier one, uh, that you've heard a lot for this past year. We work with Curriculum Council, we work with our, um, Union Para team to talk about streamlining some of the required assessments, as well as decreasing some of the benchmark assessments. So that is the goal of the, our assessment calendar this coming year, and to not overlap, especially when there are so many assessments that have been around the same time of year.
Perfect. Um, from what I'm understanding, right, and I'm glad it's clear for the community, is that essentially the discussion around the frequency of testing has been had, and it's been reduced and streamlined to minimize the impact on our students away from their curriculum.
Correct.
So very simply put, I hope, I hope parents are watching and they're excited about this change. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Maybe I just let the board know that on the attachment, it did say that this is a renewal.
I think the point is that on the agenda itself, the item for board docs, it doesn't recognize, but yes, the PDF does say it's a renewal.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Fabian.
Yes.
Ms. Hannah.
Yes.
Ms. Lindsay.
Yes.
Mr. McBride.
Yes.
Ms. Ramirez.
Yes.
Mr. Riddle.
Yes.
President Rodriguez.
Yes, motion carries. Item thirteen C, approval to purchase iReady assessments for math and reading.
It is the recommendation of the administration that the Board of Education authorizes Superintendent or her designee to approve the purchase of curriculum associates iReady assessments for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year in the amount of forty-three thousand three hundred and sixty dollars.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Mr. Riddle.
Second.
Second by Ms. Fabian. Any discussion on this motion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Fabian.
Yes.
Ms. Hannah.
Yes.
Ms. Lindsay.
Yes.
Mr. McBride.
Yes.
Ms. Ramirez.
Yes.
Mr. Riddle.
Yes.
President Rodriguez.
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to personnel items, item fourteen, fourteen A Personnel seven twenty-two, twenty twenty-five.
It is the recommendation that the Board of Education accept the administration's recommendation to approve the appointments, retirement, and accept the resignations and terminations as found on schedules F one zero zero two, L nine four nine, T three one seven, and G six six zero. Accept the second and fourth name on the certified staff resignation schedule, L nine four nine.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion approved by Mr. Riddle.
Yes.
Second by Ms. Lindsay.
Oh, Ms. Fabian.
Oh, Ms. Fabian, okay. Any discussion on the motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
For the rest of them.
Okay. All right, we have a motion in a second?
Mm-hmm.
Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Fabian.
Yes.
Ms. Hannah.
Yes.
Ms. Lindsay.
Yes.
Mr. McBride.
Yes.
Ms. Ramirez.
Yes.
Mr. Riddle.
Yes.
President Rodriguez.
Yes, motion carries.
It is the recommendation that the Board of Education accept the administration's recommendation to accept the resignations of the second and the fourth name on the certified staff resignation schedules, L nine four nine, Helen Duda and Kirk Ogozek.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Mr. Riddle.
Second.
Second by Ms. Fabian. Any discussion on this motion?
I have a comment.
Ms. Lindsay.
Um, so I will be voting no on this item based on the very limited information that we have. I don't think it's appropriate to, um, proceed in this manner, so I'll be voting no.
Thank you, Ms. Fabian.
And just, um, I look forward to having future conversations on how we proceed in cases such as these, so I look forward to seeing that on an agenda where we can have a community discussion.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Fabian.
Yes.
Ms. Hannah.
No.
Ms. Lindsay.
No.
Mr. McBride.
Yes.
Ms. Ramirez.
Yes.
Mr. Riddle.
Yes.
President Rodriguez.
Yes, motion carries.
And then do we have...
Okay, fourteen B.
We have admin appointments.
Oh, yeah.
Fifteen.
Administrative appointments, please. At this time, I'd like to introduce Ms. Jenna Flovodnik, who previously served as the manager, family liaison at John Lewis Middle School. She will now serve as the manager of special initiatives at Lincoln Center with a starting salary of sixty thousand dollars. Congratulations.
Um, and we just wanna highlight again, Joaquin alum.
Yes.
Yes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to welcome Ms. Jacqueline Thomasville, who previously served as the Director of Academic Enrichment, P K K through eight in Zion Elementary School District. She will now serve as the Academic Chair for Social Studies at the Washington Campus with a starting salary of ninety thousand dollars. Congratulations, Dr. Thomasville. Our next appointment will be Ms. Elizabeth Sebastian, who previously was a teach, a math teacher at A O E C. She will now serve as the Academic Chair in Math at the Brookside Campus with a starting salary of ninety thousand dollars. Congratulations, Ms. Sebastian.
Again, Joaquin alumna and I L L.
Congratulations.
Yes, thanks.
Great.
Great.
Oh, you did.
And...
Our next appointment will be, I believe it's Dr. Fazia Bakter, who is project lead with the Illinois State Board of Education. She will now serve as the bilingual coordinator at Lincoln Center with a starting salary of a hundred and eight thousand dollars. Congratulations, Dr. Bakter. Our next appointment is Ms. Shannon Lindsey, who previously served as the Assistant Principal at McCall Elementary. She will now serve as a literacy coordinator here at Lincoln Center with a starting salary of eighty-three thousand dollars, wait, eighty-three thousand five hundred dollars. Congratulations, Ms. Lindsey.
I mean, she's gotta serve all of them, she did so good.
Look, I'm gonna scream, McCall.
But that's why.
Our next appointment is Ms. Sibby Bailey, who previously was an assistant principal in Round Lake District one sixteen. She will now serve as the current assistant principal at McCall Elementary with a starting salary of seventy-six thousand dollars. Congratulations, Ms. Bailey. Our next appointee will be Ms. Beatrice Beatrice Reyes, who previously was a teach, a bilingual fourth grade teacher at Washington Elementary. She will now serve as their assistant principal with a starting salary of seventy-four thousand five hundred dollars. Congratulations, Ms. Reyes.
I love that we're growing our own.
That part, that part.
Our next appointee, who has been with the district for many, many years and has served as the interim principal at North Elementary for a number of years, I wanna believe it's almost close to a decade, but we wanted to make sure that she was appointed as we did an internal audit of interim positions and ensure that she is in that seat as the appointed principal, is Ms. Nicole Lumberger, who served as a principal of North. And her salary will remain the same.
I need a bump.
Her salary will remain the same at a hundred and twenty-nine thousand five hundred eighty-four dollars and twelve cents. Sorry, I'm still reading. Congratulations, Ms. Lumberger.
You can't leave now. You cannot leave now.
Our next appointee is Dr. Michael Fields, who previously served, give me one second, who previously served as the Assistant Principal at Brookside Campus. He will now step in as the interim principal at Jack Benny for the full school year of twenty-five, twenty-six, with a starting salary of a hundred and six thousand eight hundred and sixty-two dollars, and let's not forget the eight cents. Congratulations, Dr. Fields.
You brought your cheerleaders to the draft.
I look forward to working with you.
Don't be sad. He's, he's still with us.
Be excited for him.
He's still with us. Um, Board President, can I ask a clarifying question? Um, so within the introductions of our administrative appointees, I understand there was an audit done on interim positions. So what is the normal practice? Like, I'm glad we're hiring our own, right? But when there's an interim position, Superintendent, do we put out a job posting and those individuals have to reapply for that? How does that work?
So I want to...
Let her finish.
Let me finish the question, because then I'll forget, Ms. Hannah, but I will answer your question, okay? Um, so I believe it was in March or eight, I believe it was March, Dr. Sari, April, um, I asked a team to go back and look at interim positions and who was out there that still had an interim title, based off, I'm sorry, based off conversations that we previously had in closed sessions around how many intrims we have, how long have they been there? Um, so my team went out and, um, did their due diligence, and I don't know the number of positions, but I believe there was about, don't hold me to this, five to eight.
Okay.
So I asked them to have conversations with those individuals that we were going to look at advertising those positions now over the summer.
Okay.
Um, though people who are in those positions, we are hoping that they apply and they go through the process of the interview process, and then the team will select the best, the most highly qualified candidate that fills that role, and we'll be bringing those forward to the board. Um, Dr. Sari, do you remember how many positions that was? You don't have to state it if you don't remember, I could circle back with the board, I don't wanna give an inaccurate... Okay. Um, and there was a few in operations. Um, and so we're just ensuring that we get people appointed and having them have that chance to interview for that job or other jobs in the district if they're interested in.
Okay, so clarifying question. So we had an interim principal for ten years. You're very patient. You're very patient. And so that job was posted, and she had to interview it even though she had been doing it for ten years?
Yes, Ms. Lumberger did go through an interview process, and at a, at the school level, it's a combination of teachers within that building, staff from Lincoln Center. Um, I don't exactly know whether if there was parents on hers, but we do like to ensure that parents are involved, um, if we can, have a student involved. So we, we want the school community to be part of that panel, um, to select their next leader.
Understood. Okay.
Ms. Hannah.
Okay, in terms of interims, okay, that I've never heard of an interim be for that long of a duration. And so, um, I'm just wondering, is there any kind of anything that goes retroactive?
No, because Ms. Lumberger was paid based off our salary scale that we previously did, so she has been getting her salary increases. She's properly placed on the salary scale, so there will be no, um, retro pay in that sense. Um, what happened, well, I'm not, she, she just had the interim title for quite some time. Actually, it may have even fallen under the radar that that interim title was still attached to her, but when we did that audit, it was apparent that that was there. And so in fairness, um, to Ms. Lumberger, that position was posted, her team came together. Of course, it may not been, well, I'm not, I shouldn't say that. It's over the summer, so I do know teachers came in to interview. I do know part of A S O P was, um, individuals from A S O P were also part of the interview panel, um, and a number of candidates were interviewed. Um, Ms. Lumberger did, um, earn the position through the interview process.
Yeah, and we're gonna stay on top of that.
Yes, ma'am.
From here on out.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, sorry to put you on the spot. We're not, it's just, it's the ten years that is like, wow, patience.
No, absolutely. Yeah, no, that is definitely not a reflection on Ms. Lumberger, absolutely. So, thank you.
Thank you, congratulations. Okay, moving on, personal items, fourteen B, approval of the A A S A National Conference on Education in Nashville, Tennessee.
It is the recommendation of the administration that the Board of Education authorized the attendance of Superintendent Teresa Placencia and Deputy Superintendent Dr. Edward Sisario, Eduardo Sisario, to attend the A A S A National Conference in Nashville, Tennessee, February eleventh through fifteenth, at an estimated cost of four thousand sixty-three dollars per attendee, or eight thousand one hundred twenty-six dollars total. I will state that this is a conference that we attend yearly, however, we just brought it earlier because the early bird special is open, and we wanted to ensure that we are able to access, access those discounted rates and ensure that we have, um, the best travel rates also.
Right. Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Riddle, approve.
Second.
Second by Ms. Fabian. Any discussion on the motion?
Uh, two questions. Ms. Lindsay wanted to point out the date on the actual agenda item as September twenty-seventh, but it looks like your travel date's a February tenth of, I mean, we can't go back in time, but February tenth of twenty-six, it's not even the, it's not even the same month or day, so if we wanna make sure that we can update that.
Are you talking about the forms in the PDF?
Right, right in front of you. Right on your screen.
Oh, I see it, I, I apologize, now I do see it. Yes, we will make that, we will make that correction.
So your form says it should be February tenth, uh, through the fifteenth.
It is definitely in February.
And the other, um, my question...
Not twenty-two either.
Yeah, we will have that corrected.
We're not time traveling. Um, and then the second question is, again, is when we're filling this out, that we're sure that we can capture as much as we can, so with that transportation piece, again, um, trying to capture those ride shares into that because we always get a higher bill. Um, and I'm hoping that that registration fee is, in case you don't get the early bird, because if it doesn't get in on time, so just that we're mindful that we're overestimating so that we don't have to come back and adjust later.
Yes, definitely noted.
So, so are we going to vote on how this... So are we going to vote on how this is on the face of this, or are we going to hold it? Do you see that, Ms. Vanderbroek?
Yes, the dates, the dates that you're referencing are related to when it would show up on the agenda for board action. You would be acting on the recommended action, which says, I see that, these dates for September 27, '22, and the absolute date, September 27, '22, that is what is put in when we load the document into board docs as to when we would like to see it come before the board. This, I'm not sure how that date got in there and didn't get caught, but what you are voting on is the dates of February 11 to 15, which would be 2026, which is when the conference would take place.
Right, right.
But it needs to be shown on there.
So I know we're in a time, especially when we're looking at national funding and concerns around that. Typically, I wouldn't be supportive considering the larger climate. However, I'm hoping during this time that Dr. Sarsario and Ms. Placencia, you're both able to network with other superintendents on what these next couple of years are gonna look like, right, and bring back ideas on how we're able to pivot. And for that reason, I'm supportive of this.
Yeah, I'm supportive of it too. However, I don't like the way that it is listed here with the 2022 preferred date, September 27, 2022, absolute date, September 27, 2022. That needs to be checked.
Okay, who made the motion?
We can correct that in the document.
I think I made the motion.
I second it.
I'd like to ask if you would amend the motion to reflect the dates of February 11 through 15, 2026.
So the recommended action is correct, though.
The action is correct.
The action is correct. So we don't have to amend it. We have to just fix, not the action.
Not the action.
We just have to update it on there.
And the other thing is irrelevant. Okay, roll call vote, please.
Just correct. Yes.
Ms. Fabian?
Yes.
Ms. Hannah?
I'm going to pass on this because I don't like the way that it is being presented.
Ms. Lenzing?
Yes, with the acknowledgement, it's February 10 through the 15.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Ms. Ramirez?
Yes.
Mr. Riddle?
Yes.
President Rodriguez?
Yes, motion carries. Item 14C, reclassification of EL student assessment data position.
It is the recommendation that the Board of Education approve the reclassification of coordinator of EL student assessment data to manager of EL student assessment data. The position is currently vacant.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Riddle to approve.
Second.
Second by Ms. Lenzing. Discussion on the motion?
Yes.
Mr. Riddle.
I have a question. I see we've been unable to fill the position. I am curious what the pay range is for the data coordinator versus the data manager. So how much is it going up and what's that range? And is that going to help us, you know, secure somebody to fill this position?
I will tell you, based off the title of coordinator to manager, it will be a decrease on the salary schedule. Dr. Ambrosio, I did see her earlier.
Right here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Hi.
Oh, it's going down. Okay.
Do you want to speak to this, please?
Community, Superintendent, Board President, I don't set the salary schedule for any of the personnel. However, we have had this position vacant for a couple of years now, and we are desperately needing help. We have a lot of wonderful candidates, but they don't have the type 75. And it requires somebody that knows data and knows EL and can speak another language. So it is very difficult to find. Yes.
So I just wanted to point out, I did ask the question. So the only reason you really require 75 is if you're in a supervisory role. And so this data position, to clarify, is, does not supervise anyone and therefore does not technically need that 75 position.
That's right. We were able to change a job description and add some of those responsibilities as supervisory under our assistant director.
Okay, and then so that way now all they'll need is their bachelor's.
That's right.
Right. And so the actual salary schedule is going down on this position, but the requirements are moving down as well, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Which you believe will cast a larger net, so that you're able to fill the position.
Yes.
Thanks for that clarification.
Ms. Lenzing?
Okay, so you caught me at job descriptions. So the coordinator job description had supervisory responsibilities within it?
Yes.
Okay. And that would make sense for that role?
As a supervisor, yes, as a coordinator. But now that we've moved it to data manager, the coordinator supervisory type job, pieces of the job go under the assistant director.
Yeah, that piece I understand. It's more within this coordinator level if supervisory expectations are truly needed at the coordinator level. So it was there, and I understand why we're moving it down. But as we go into review job descriptions, that's gonna be on the back of my mind, is what coordinators really need to have their type 75. And that's not a specific you thing, it's just so I.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Fabian?
Yes.
Ms. Hannah?
Yes.
Ms. Lenzing?
Yes.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Ms. Ramirez?
Yes.
Mr. Riddle?
Yes.
President Rodriguez?
Yes, motion carries. Item 15, grants and donations. We have none, 16 other, there's nothing. 17, financial reports, ratification of the second processing of June 2025 and the first processing of July 2025 board bills, manual check request payments and old national bank insurance payments for the period of June 18, 2025, through June 30, 2025, and July 1, 2025, through July 15, 2025.
It is the recommendation of the administration at the Board of Education, ratify the second June 2025 until first July 2025 processing of board bills, manual check request payments and no national bank insurance payment for the period of June 18, 2025 through June 30, 2025, and July 1, 2025 through July 15, 2025. The accounts payable board payments for the period of June 18, 2025 totals $0, and the period of July 1, 2025 through July 15, 2025 totals $330,933.76. The manual check request payments for the period of June 4, 2025 through June 17, 2025 total $1,487,302.25, and July 1, 2025 to July 15, 2025 total $454,949.85. The old national bank insurance payments for the period of June 18, 2025 through June 30, 2025 totals $0. July 1, 2025 through July 15, 2025 total $0.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Riddle to approve.
Second.
Second by Ms. Fabian. Any discussion on the motion? Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Ms. Hannah?
Pass.
Ms. Lenzing?
Pass.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Ms. Ramirez?
Yes.
Mr. Riddle?
Yes.
President Rodriguez?
Yes, motion carries. Item 18, reports and presentations. Do we have any committee reports? No committee reports, delegates report, superintendents report, thank you.
At this time, I'd like to ask Ms. Jennifer Rice-Della Sanchez, along with her team that will be giving us a presentation around grading and final exam in regards to policy 5212 and 5213 with updates and recommendations. Thank you.
One second. For the committee reports, are you gonna give us our assignments?
That's later in the...
No, that's not later than that.
Good evening, Board President, Superintendent, Board of Education, newly appointed board members. Congratulations to you all. Community colleagues, my name is Jennifer Rice-Della Sanchez, and I want to welcome our team that is also here with us this evening to present to you. We have Dr. Robert Vassal, Nate Weber, Frederick Curtis, Tanya Evans, Victor Chang, and last but certainly not least, Molly Schaefer. And we are here this evening to walk you through our timeline. If you're new to our board, we've been going at this policy and working with teams and committees to enhance the work for about a year and a half. So we're gonna update you on our timeline and our process and the events that have occurred over the last year and a half. We're gonna walk you through what our district policy believes grades should mean and represent and communicate, as well as walk you through our most recent committee's work and recommendations for the next two years. So the continuation of the work never stops as it's around grades. So next, thank you very much. So we started our work back in December of 2023, in which we had a committee that got together with multiple leaders across all those roles and responsibilities. And we used our equity review tool for this process. We reviewed surrounding districts' policies. We looked at research that was current. We dug into a lot of readings, and we made recommendations to the Board of Education, and that was in May of 2024. Our committee then presented our process at that point, our recommendations to you. And on the next slide, which, when I get to it, we'll actually share what those recommendations were, which were approved at that time. They are in our current policy right now. The one recommendation that was not approved at that time was shifting from 100-point grade scale to a 50-point grade scale, in which every single letter grade, an A, B, C, D, and F, would represent 10 percentage points. What the board recommended at that point was that they asked for our committee to further engage its stakeholders, gather more information, come back, and share that information of all that data. So what has been approved, just to update you, so far within our policy, is we have combined two different policies into one, grading and final exam. We required all of our courses to use the percentage breakdown for summative and formative assessments, that's a 70/30. We wanted to replace our class rank with the cum laude system, in which you see all of those breakdowns of the three categories of cum laude. And that was starting with class of 2025. We also have work of our middle schools that we're getting together to do work around a common retake and makeup policy, to make sure that that was guaranteed for all of our students across our five middle schools, as well as within our high school, to have a framework within each department for a common retake and makeup policy, and adding their relevance to their content. So when the board gave us feedback to hit the streets, right, and to engage further stakeholders, we got together throughout August and October, and we did just that. Surveys went out to students, to our staff, as well as hosting three town halls, in which Nate is going to speak further on in just a second here. And after that, we prepared the information, the data, the process that we went through at that time, and we brought it back to the board, and that was on December 10 of 2024. In which, I would like Nate to go a little bit deeper into that, and I'm gonna bring him right up.
Good evening, everyone. So you'll see on the slide here that these, this is actually the beginning of our policy, which is our statements of our grading philosophy and beliefs, which are what we carry throughout the entire district. And all of our policy work, all of our committee work was rooted in these belief statements. Next slide, please. So, as was mentioned previously, we conducted surveys, whoops, we asked roughly about 1,500 students and 130 staff members various questions which stemmed around our belief statements to determine to what degree students and staff were aligned in their experiences in regards to how our grading policy was carried out in practice. And on most of these issues, both students and staffs agreed they were in alignment. However, there were two glaring exceptions. Students and staff members were not in the same belief in terms of their grades meaning the same thing, no matter what course, if they were different teachers. So if two teachers were teaching algebra, students said depending on which teacher you had, you could have a different grading experience. And that students articulated that teachers often graded based on behavior. And when we say behavior, we don't just mean a student's conduct in class, it can also mean a student's ability to turn in assignments on time and completely, their ability to show up to school, and basically anything that is considered to be non-academic. We also consulted some data to determine to what degree our grades were validated by test scores. And then we also, as mentioned previously, held three town halls, in which we solicited feedback from community members to determine what we found were common themes in terms of what we believed about grades. What we found was that there were numerous themes that had to do with rigor and maintaining high degrees of standards for our students. And so based on all of that, we found that our four main areas of focus were articulated, which is what is highlighted there, that we need to ensure that our current systems, that our current practices reflected that academic performance and skills were reported separately from academic behaviors, that both still need to be reported, but they need to be reported separately. Student learning needs to be reflective of state and nationally recognized standards, and that we need to clearly and regularly communicate to all stakeholders where a student's learning is in order to inform instructional decisions. And then lastly, that grades should mean the same thing for all students, regardless of what class or school they attend. And I will turn it over to Dr. Bo Vassal, who will speak on some of the recommendations the policy made.
So when we sent out an invitation to middle school and high school staff to take part, we looked at those four different areas. And you can see there the four bullet points at the bottom as our four areas of focus that would lead to our four subcommittees. So go ahead to the next. And so we started in December, you can see our timeline. We began meeting in those four committees and worked our way up until May, preparing our presentation to all of you here as a result of the work of those four subcommittees. So we started with each committee having a problem with practice, as we had highlighted those four different areas that are currently in board policy, where we saw some type of either discrepancy in the data or something that led us to believe that it was an area of focus. We broke into those committees and worked through then what kind of data we needed to look at. We looked at either sample gradebook data, we looked at student grades overall, we looked at state data, we looked at research, we took a wide variety of data for each of those committees to take a look at, areas that possibly highlighted areas of practice that needed to be addressed. We talked about possible solutions, we talked about short term, we talked about long term, we talked about middle school, we talked about high school, and brought those forward then as a result. And so these were the areas of focus, again, of each of those four committees. The first one, grading systems with academic performance skills separately from academic behaviors. The second is the district's grading system, where it reflects student learning relative to state and nationally recognized standards. The third being looking at equitably and reliably for students, parents, and educators to be regularly updated on student progress. And the last, that grades should mean the same thing for all students regardless of classroom or school that they attend. I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Victor.
So, there's not much, Mr., that Bo mentioned here that's different, just that each problem, each committee focused on those things. So they looked at, first committee talked about whether or not they can divide the academic progress and the student behavior. The second one was whether or not our gradebooks were actually aligned to the standard, like if there were the grade, you can see which standard was being assessed. Third is whether or not each teacher, like if I'm teaching ESL 5 and there's another teacher that's teaching ESL 5, whether or not our gradebooks align. And then Committee Four is about whether or not the parents and the stakeholders understand what those grades mean.
So the committee's findings reveal that grades are often influenced by behavior and, like, participation and completion, rather than aligned directly to academic standards or learning objectives. There is inconsistency in grading practices across courses in the district, with variations in assignment types, weights, and reassessment policies, even within the same course, which impacts the reliability and the equity of student grades. So as a result, the grading practices do not consistently or clearly reflect student learning. So as a result, the grading practices do not consistently or clearly reflect student learning.
Good evening, everyone. The committees aim to improve grading practices by clearly separating academic performance from behavior and ensuring alignment to standards and appropriate rigor. The committees are working to create consistent, equitable grading systems across classrooms and refine how grades communicate student learning. And lastly, the ultimate goal is to make grading more meaningful, accurate, and reflective of student progress. Thank you.
And, and hi, everyone. Here are our recommendations of how to proceed. All of these recommendations are procedural recommendations. There's no recommendations for any change of the board policy. Committee One is recommending that while gradebooks still can be used to communicate behaviors to parents, that grades around behaviors will be weighted at zero, so they're a communication piece and do not affect the academic grade. Committee Two establishes over the next year, or maybe two, I think, four to six learning outcomes per unit, and they will align with assessment instructional practices, so it'll be common across all courses. Not all courses, common within each course is the better way to say it. Committee Three. Sorry. Course of the Year, Each Course Team, Content Team, that's what I wrote here. In grade six through 12, we'll develop agreed-upon common weights, naming conventions, and other things. If you've ever looked at teachers' gradebooks, they're all labeled different things. We're gonna get that common. And Committee Four, at the end, after these first three are in place, we'll investigate the efficacy of the current 100-point grading policy. Thank you. And now I think is...
So with all that being said, there's going to be two years. We're gonna need time, space, energy for that common language and common understanding, and for folks to get together to have this academic discourse and negotiation sometimes of what's there and what's not. And that's the important work of aligning those standards, ensuring that professional development is geared around having that collaboration. And it would be over the next two years, in which we would use institute days. We would use our monthly school improvement SIP Wednesdays. And we would continue to dig into research. We want to make sure that those common weights are there, and that it's just in general in the heart of the process to begin with, that it is equitable for students when they're receiving a grade. And we really just know what that means, no matter what, right? No matter what class, and again, what school. The cool part about this is this is actually the work that we're doing. It aligns to our initiatives around our core tier-one implementation and professional development, and really ensuring that our teachers have a voice in this at the table, and allowing a space and place for that agency to happen, as well as our school SIP goals. School SIP goals are all around that core and that tier-one implementation, as well as their Wednesdays being supportive of that for student learning. So with that being said, we're gonna open it up for questions that you may have for us.
Ms. Hannah. I'm glad that we're not throwing this right onto the teachers, right, you know, going into this school year. I hope not, right? Okay, and so we have time. It appears that we have time to make certain that we truly do have the voices of the teachers. And so I heard you guys said that there was, that you guys surveyed, but there was only 130 staff that participated in the survey? That is not representative of our teaching staff. We have many more teachers. And so I would like to see some kind of data showing that you all surveyed all of the teachers in terms of this initiative. And I just have to say this in a disclaimer. You guys are doing our board work.
So... Let's collaborate. What do you need from us?
Well, it would be good, you know, if we could collaborate, you know, but policy work is board work.
We're right there for you. We're all on the same team. We're a cog in a wheel. So let's keep that up.
All right. Very good.
Ms. Lindsay.
So just on that point, so in terms of, I was asked for the first part to join with the grading policy, and then, so that kind of ties into it, but I hear you, Ms. Hannah. I want to give some kudos, because I said it the last time, and I'll say it again. What I really like about this committee is that you heard the feedback, you took it back a step, and you created a project plan, and you set specific timelines. You set goals, right? So each committee, this is our ultimate goal of what we want to achieve. And you set responsibilities. It's very organized, and it's very intentional with people's time. And I can express how much I really appreciate that. So fabulous job in that respect. I'm also gonna sing the praises of Ms. Klein, and I'm gonna age myself. This is 25 years ago. In her class, she gave the students agency over how our grade went. Because granted, we were part of the CSP program, so we thought we knew everything. I'll just, I'll be upfront about that. So a lot of us felt that the homework was busy work. And if we understood it, we shouldn't have to keep showing you that we understand it. So she gave us the agency to say, okay, let's decide now. If you feel you're the type of student where you just want to be assessed on your tests, and that frees up other time, you can accept that as your grading standard. If you feel that the homework is helpful, or you feel you get test anxiety, and that homework could boost your grade, then you can take that route. So I'm hoping that these committees also talk with the students and provide different access points on how they engage with their grade, right? Because if I've got it, and I need to keep proving I have it, I am not gonna want to do the homework. And I'm gonna start calculating, all right, where is my time worth? I can give up 0.001% of my grade by not doing this assignment, right? And then the teacher has to chase him down, and like, why aren't you doing your work? Like, it's just not worth it. So I'm just gonna put that little bug in people's ears. With the Committee Three, I'm curious for the sixth to eighth grade teams, because we do have students, and you even alluded to it, so hopefully I'm tracking, that move between middle schools for a variety of reasons, right? So I want to know how are they going to collaborate with other middle schools to make sure that it's cohesive across the district? Because if we have a kid that's over at Abbott, and they need to move to Benny, you know, they shouldn't be surprised with, oh, this is how it happens here? Like, we're gonna have different teaching personalities, different approaches, but there should be some similarities. So can you confirm how that collaboration's gonna happen?
Yes, thank you for the feedback about the student board members. First and foremost, we did work back when it started with Victor.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So I believe this would be something that we can meet with you all, once you get your feet wet, you start the year, in which we'd love to partner with you. On that, I think that'd be wonderful. So thank you for that feedback. As far as a prime example of, I'm a student at Benny in seventh grade, and I'm going over to Lewis and/or vice versa, how you phrased it, the long and short of it, that's exactly around our initiative in general, right? That we have a scope of work and around a timeframe that the learning gets done, and that we're assessing the learning, and we're looking how well kids are doing that. All common. All common. And then there's differentiation within the classroom, right, of course. With this, this also, this is a deeper layer of, yes, that's in common. And then when we go to look at the gradebook, and what a grade would be on a report card, we realize, sheesh, that actually skews our data of what's common. And we could have grades that may or may not be matching the rigor based on assignments that are in addition to what's there. And we could just be labeling them different, or in our platform, one is weighted 50, but one is weighted 70. And so the communication will first and foremost be with just to get our professional staff together of the work that they really already are doing, and to continue that, and those processes within the school, and giving them time to do that, and to negotiate those things. Oh, this is a summative. Oh, yeah, well, I was using this as a formative, and you know, those conversations. Then it really does move to the kiddos, right? In which those are the conversations that we have when a student would come to us on the first day. Here's your syllabus. It would be across all of our SLY, and that they're gonna have that communicated, and it starts there. As this is the work of the course across the year. And so that starts there, and then working with them. So if it was a course, to your example, where students had agency and weighing in that, and we knew that to be true, those teachers get together in that department, and they discuss it, and they say, okay, here's how this looks. How do we want to have a little bit of this gray area wiggle room? Those are the conversations. And what I appreciate about this, and hearing all of our staff members, and staff is very passionate about this, so it cannot be overnight. They're very passionate. And so what we need is time for them to talk through that safely. And I say this, sometimes you just gotta go through the mud a little bit versus going too quick, because too quick, you don't get to have the rich dialogue and the safetiness of practicing safe conversations in a place professionally sometimes. So it's gonna allow for that over time, and it's, again, it's a continuation. And some of these areas that we represented and that we showed, some of it's already done in some of these bullet points, which is really great. Just really great. So it will continue to the students, as the grades are always communicated to them. They just won't know that it's being communicated in the class or the street, down the street, or the school down the street, I should say.
Okay. I'm gonna just summarize what I heard and my takeaway from that, and one last question after that. So what I'm hearing is that across the schools, the sixth-grade math, teachers are gonna get together, go through the mud. I appreciate the honest conversations in safe spaces, right? Because we need people to have their voices heard so that we can identify, this is where everybody agrees, and this is where we need to fine-tune and get everybody on the same page, because that buy-in is so important, right? It's so important, because if you don't have buy-in, it just hinders all of the work we're doing. And the impact is our student success. The impact is our student scores. The impact is their future, right? We got the day-to-day jobs, but it's, we're trying to impact them. So I really appreciate that that's an intentional piece. With Committee Four, how long do you guys anticipate you'll need to look at the practices in place for Committees One through Three before you decide, okay, we have enough information to start looking at that 100% scale?
I could see it being 100. It could be 100% scale. It could be a one through four, just like a continuation of our elementary. It could be, hey, let's keep the 100%, because that's in line for college, but let's make sure that there is this separate behavioral piece on a report card. It could be multiple things, but I could see us, when we were kind of chatting about it, beginning with the end in mind, we most definitely will be back within two years, because we want to bring all this back and share percentages of the implementation plan and completion. And then from there, we'll be gathering information, I would say, within year two. Okay, let's look at this. Let's see how this works. And it's gonna be clunky, and being vulnerable to that, and being open to that, I think is appreciative. At the minimum, it's just appreciative. Oh, I want to add this too, within Dr. Field's department. Additional piece of what students are learning across grade levels are those curriculum grade-level brochures, in which they're being added. And so you're gonna see like the types of stuff they're learning in parent-friendly language. And then this is what the grade looks like, a little bit more nitty-gritty. Ms. Riddle, and then Ms. Fabian.
Okay. My question, when I read this, I was, I appreciate all the work that you've done. And my question is, when, you know, the, well, here, let me explain what my question is, I guess, is really more about how do we test for real learning? And if we, you know, does behavior not, do we not want to engage students as well? Isn't that a part of our responsibility in education? And we turn off a lot of students, I think, in our systems because of the lower grades they get. And I don't like to see that. I don't like to see us turning off students. You know, if a test is truly reflecting learning, or is the test really reflecting recall, memorization? You know, if that's all we're testing for, you know, I get concerned when I when I see us putting so much emphasis on testing. And if you're a teacher, for instance, who's teaching, let's say, psychology or vocational education, some career program, you know, or even PE, and you see students who are really participating, they may not be outstanding students, but they're really participating in class, they're there every day, and yet you can't reflect that in your grade. You have to give them, you said you have to, here you want to separate behavior and academia or academic testing. How does this, does this teacher, who has a student that participates a lot, he may not be getting As, but the teacher feels he's there every day, he's participating, he's asking relevant questions, but he has poor recall, and he doesn't, or she doesn't do well on tests? Are we building anything in there where, how do you reflect that in, when you report, you know, to on the grade? And I noticed, in here, you said a teacher has to reflect reporting every week, and, you know, but they can't, they gotta do zero for behavior. So how are they reporting that good behavior? The participation, the, you know, asking critical questions in class, but, gosh, this child does terrible when we test them. You know, is there anywhere that a teacher can, how can they separate that? How can they report behavior and participation and engagement versus the student who's really bright and says, yeah, I don't have to do the homework. I don't even have to come to class. I can sit in the back of the class and play on my phone, because I'm gonna get As anyway when the test is given. So I guess those are tough questions I'm asking.
Sure. So if I'm understanding you correctly, basically the question is, how do we basically ensure a student is still engaged, even though that they may not demonstrate learning or mastery through traditional assessment methods? And then basically, how do we report behaviors as well?
That behavior, that willingness to be engaged and participate, but he's not gonna be. You've got me.
Sure, sure. Yeah, no, those are good questions.
Come on.
Too powerful. All right. So basically, what goes back to our philosophy statements at the beginning, and one was that we would report both academic and behavior. So Committee Number Two, which was the committee that I had the privilege of being a part of, was ensuring that we align to standards. And one of the really difficult tasks that comes with this, and which will be going throughout the next two years, is not only coming up with four to six learning outcomes per unit for every single course, but along with that, performance descriptors that every teacher can look at and say, yes, if a student can do this consistently, then they have demonstrated the mastery of this, and therefore they have earned this mark. Because ultimately, we want grades to be communicative. We don't want them to be compensatory, where students are basically gaming the system by just doing what needs to be done to get something where they're chasing a grade rather than chasing learning. So what we're really trying to do, and the big task, is really looking at our current practices. Are we giving assignments that are assessing learning, or are we giving assignments that are assessing compliance? And that's a really difficult thing, because we have a lot of teachers who have been doing basically what they learned in teaching schools, and what they learned as learners. Because a lot of these shifts will be definitely very new to a lot of people. And our hope is that we shift the focus to learning, but what that can mean is that if a student, like you articulated, is struggling to demonstrate mastery through traditional assessments, that we can provide alternative assessments. That if they are continuously trying, if they are engaging in reteaching, if they are engaging in additional formative work that is demonstrating a movement towards mastery, then it is on the teacher and it is on the school to figure out ways to allow that student to perhaps demonstrate mastery with alternative performances. And it takes a lot of work. And I can say, in my experience, generally speaking, if a student is applying themselves in the manner which you described, more often than not, in fact, I can think of zero examples where it's occurred, they do improve. They do learn. But it is on the teacher and it is on the school to ensure that they have those alternatives to demonstrate that. As with behavior, there is not a single teacher, there's not a single educator, there is not a single parent who doesn't want to have behavior reported. Everybody wants to know if their child is behaving in a way that is appropriately, if they're turning things in on time, if they are performing... if they're turning things in on time, if they are performing, um, in a way that is appropriate for school. However, with our grading philosophy statements, we believe that that should be reported separately. So if we do have a student who is brilliant and has mastered all of the academic requirements for that particular course, but they are disengaged, then that student shouldn't necessarily be punished if they know all the things they need to know for that course, but maybe don't necessarily engage in some of the daily formative tasks that are clearly beneath their level. So that is another additional challenge of shifting that mindset, um, for not only our students, for our teachers who have been inundated in a system that more often than not, well, very frequently rewards basically compliance as opposed to learning.
Right.
So, and that's a big shift.
And you're gonna get a, a lot of pushback from some of those teachers that really relied heavily on engagement. And they, they have a problem with giving this student who's not turning in homework, not participating, but yes, can blow through these exams, you know, that are currently given and get ace on A on everything, you know, a hundred percent on everything.
For sure.
Those teachers are gonna want, how do you deal with a teacher that says, yeah, I've gotta use behavior as well. Otherwise, why am I teaching this class? You know, every day I'm here, that student doesn't participate, doesn't even, isn't even here most of the time.
That's very important every single day. They were shooting for the engagement of the students with one another to show that they understand and to have communicate, to be communicative and also to practice. So the engagement is key to the final product, a part of the process of learning. And so sometimes that is the shit because, um, if we have a power pass or we're giving direct instruction or directions of what to go do and then you can do it independently. We actually really want that.
Right.
Engagement is key to learning.
Right. And employers want that too. They want, they may have a student that, that overhear or a worker that knows, you know, ah, knows everything, but can't engage with the rest of the team. Can't work with them.
Sorry. I, I just want to be careful when we're using the word engagement because engagement is different for different students.
Yes.
And so when we say engagement is, I'm always raising my hand and answering questions. That may be true of me, but maybe Ms. Lenzing's engagement is she goes home and reads the book and does her own research on the topic. So I don't want to keep saying that just because I'm raising my hand, I'm more engaged with the topic than she would be.
Right.
So we really want to be clear and it goes the same with parent engagement, right? Our parents engage in different ways. So we want to be clear with, there is not one way or one right way for students to engage with the material, number one. I think what we're missing though, too, hold on, I just want to add, the MTSS process?
Yes.
And we also have, because we are teaching to master standards, right? That is our goal in education, to master the standards. When those standards are not being mastered, then we go through that MTSS process, tier one, tier two, tier three, so that it is the onus is on the educators to then find those accommodations and how do we engage a student in the way that they are able to or can. That is also why we have IEPs and 504 plans. But I also want to remind you, we have SCL standards where we're also asking children to master those standards on behavior and comportment. Um, so I just really want to caution because not each child and not every child is going to be, you know, an extrovert, an outstanding. Not every child can sit still.
Right.
Like, so we just want to make sure that, and our policy, our, we have a non-social promotion policy. And after hearing what I heard today, then that's not true. We've been promoting kids for social behavior versus actual academic. So if our policy says that we are not to promote children for, you know, non, for, um, academic behavior or social behavior, our policy says that we, it's non-social behavior, right? We want to make sure we're getting the academics. So this all aligns to that policy. I want to, I'm hoping that after what Ms. Lenzing said, we're also looking that it aligns to our homework policy. Um, but I just really wanted to caution that the other reason, um, I was raising my hand was because when you said, everybody wants to know how their child's behaving. As a teacher, I can tell you that was the number one question at every single parent teacher conference, the first question. And so when you're working with your face department to do those brochures or I, I suggest also having those different, um, presentations to parents so that they can also shift their, their minds to not just ask how was my child behaving? Um, that is important, but also to ask, what is my child learning and how can I support that learning at home? Uh, because it is a mind shift. Um, and just because they're behaving doesn't mean that they're capturing the academics. So we also have to teach our, our parents that. Um, I have a couple more questions and points, but I'll let Ms. Lenzing go ahead.
Well, this was just tangential to the piece. So I think, Mr. Riddle, um, from when I was hearing your, your question, it sounded like we wanted to do limiting care where we wanted to give them bonus points for being participatory and doing good things and they're trying their best. And yes, we want our kids to try their best, but if they're not mastering that content, we need to capture that. Um, and to Ms. Fabian's point, I will never forget my AP Lit class, one of the other students, the teacher called and was like, oh, you're not really engaging in the discussion. She's like, I know what I think. I want to hear what other people are saying. And I thought that was the wisest thing for a 12th grader to say. Um, so we can't really assess engagement just on raising hand, not raising hand. And if we do have a student that truly is not engaged and is at a hundred percent with the content, they're not in the right class.
That part.
Very simply put, or it's not differentiated to meet their needs. So that, that is maybe a scenario, but then we shouldn't be looking at how we're grading the student. We should be looking at their way beyond where I'm at.
What are the support?
Because I had, I had a teacher, again, CSP, it kinda took over our brains where we knew what the content was and we were messing around in class. And she's like, well, fine, if you're not gonna listen to me, you guys teach. And one of our students, his mother worked for the district in the math department, I'm not gonna call him by name, got up there and taught the class and we were all like, yes, great job. We knew it, right? So you need to know your students. If your students are a hundred percent mastering the content you're providing, you gotta change up the game. You gotta figure out what they need to excel, not just follow the lesson plan.
And then again, goes to our MTSS process of moving our kids to gifted. I had the same situation. My child was in first grade and was getting graded low because he never volunteered to read. And so the teacher assumed that he couldn't read. My child was reading at a third grade level at first grade. He didn't want to read out loud because he had already read the five sentence. At that time, it was open court, you guys. So when we had open court, it was literally five sentences at the first grade level. So he's like, I already read it. Like, you guys, I'm way beyond this. So I completely agree. The other two points that I want to bring up, um, along with this policy as you're working through your groups is also looking at how we utilize our infant in campus, our system for capturing the grades because not all of the teachers are using that, um, in the same manner adequately. And so when you are doing your, um, mid reports, and I've mentioned this before, you have some teachers that wait to the end of the quarter, um, to grade or the end of the semester to grade. So at that mid-report, my child has a zero and is failing everything, but it's not that my child is failing, it's that the teacher did not enter any grades. So we also want to make sure that we have a standard for our teachers of how often they're grading, um, so that when those midpoint check-ins come in, it's communicated clearly to the parent of where my child is at. Or what they'll do is instead of, um, grading each individual item, they'll put all of them on the hundred scale. So for example, homework is 10 points, right? One homework a week for, for the 10 weeks. That hundred points, you can't get that hundred points to the end of that semester. So mid, mid-check-in, you're at 50% and it looks like you're failing. So again, just making sure that we're also consistent on how we're grading. So that's communicated out, um, to the parents. Um, and I, and then also you talked about syllabus or syllabi. Um, there is none in the, there are none in the elementary school. So if we can look at getting something standardized in that way as well, that would be great. Cause I can tell you as a former elementary teacher, you could walk down the hallway and see the drastic difference between the four, four, uh, first grade classrooms, right? Some kids are writing paragraphs and others are still copying and pasting or tracing letters. So that also helps parents to support and encourage the teachers to level up our students as well.
Ms. Hannah?
And I, I am going to be more, okay. But, uh, you have got to get the teachers, all of the teachers on the same page. And you have got to talk with them, collaborate with them. And I'm just saying that based on me, what I'm hearing, that thi- this plan was not brought before the teaching staff. They're the ones that are gonna have to implement it and do it in the classroom. And so the, um, the, the, the teachers, the teachers should be, um, should be involved in all of this planning and everything. And I know that there, that there were some teachers involved, but there, but a hundred percent not representative of our.
You're ab-
So we, we need a broader survey so that, uh, can buy.
You're absolutely correct, Ms. Hannah. I love that you want us as teachers in this. Where I wore my union shirt today. Um, just to say that we were represented and we were on the committee and particularly me and Hasners were on committee three on about the equitable, equitability that, uh, of these grades. And so, uh, what our recommendation is, is that each department content team is the one that is defining those standards. It's not going to be from Lincoln Center, or I guess we're not called Lincoln Center anymore, whatever we're called here, um.
Two fourteen.
Let's, let's not, let's move away from.
Whatever. Um, but it's going to be rooted in the teachers deciding what are the core, uh, learning outcomes from committee two, uh, what units are we teaching per course? What are those key target, uh, standards? And then what are our naming, naming conventions? Like, are we going to name them the same thing? How will we name them? And then that, that will be put in the syllabus for the parents so that the parents can all see dystopia. If, if we're all teaching dystopia as a sophomore lit teacher, then dystopian short story. It doesn't matter whether or not your short story is this or your short story is that, but we're all teaching dystopian short story.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so that, that will be determined by the teachers. And we also talked about in, in our equity, uh, committee, what does that look like for math teachers versus, uh, world language teachers versus art teachers? And ultimately it came down to, we shouldn't decide across the board, we should let the department and the course decide. So that's where that work is going to come in, in the next two years is you can see here, um, in 2026, after 2025, the idea is that we're all going to come and create those common learning outcomes, then we'll decide on the common naming conventions and it will be rooted out of the grassroots level. It's not going to be decided and pushed onto people.
So are we also going to, um, rate, um, graduate credits back up from seven backup to, um?
Yes. And as a sidebar for that, we will definitely have to come back for the graduation policy because world language credits will be rolling in. So we look forward to you weighing in on that when that policy comes from. Yep.
I just want to be clear with our expectation. There's never gonna be a hundred percent buy-in on anything statistically ever. And at some point you just have to move, right? So if we have those heads really coming in and we provide adequate professional development, then all of our teachers can feel supported enough to be able to do grading the way that, uh, you know, our pol- or our protocols, I should say, are, um, put together. So I just want to have clear expectations. I don't expect that you're gonna get all 1,200 teachers together in a room to agree. Um, we just have to keep the, that work moving forward. But I absolutely appreciate that you are going down to the academic chairs and down to having some of those, um, lead teachers do the work.
Yeah. And, and also when you think about the roadmap on paper and being able to talk through that, um, I'm a long-term sub. I wasn't a parent and I don't know. So having that framework that is there, that is the roadmap that I follow also supports that classroom so that they're having the same learning experience no matter, right?
And the new teachers who are just overwhelmed and don't wanna.
Exactly. Exactly. Yes.
Yeah, I just want to point out to the board that we still have a lot of business to conduct tonight and we still have to go into closed session again after this is over. So, um, we need to kind of move along. Just want to ask if our, our student board members have any comments on this topic.
I really do, um, I've heard suggestions and I really do agree with some of your terms on like behavioral and academic grading. I've, uh, have exactly experienced that myself on how if you're engaged or if you're just academically gifted, you don't really have to do much. Um, of course, as the board has stated, um, there's a lot of dispute and how things should be, really should be settled. Uh, I really do appreciate you sharing your opinion as I've never really heard this as much as usual. But yeah, thank you.
Appreciate that. Look forward to speaking with you further.
Uh, yeah, I really agree with upping the credits backups, like the original, you know, credit line, what you said. And also like a lot of your like ideas, like I would want to like further go more into it when we do have more time. Cause like the assessment, um, they seem very interesting. I want to see like, how could they help students have like a different type of learning, like ability.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
That was the meat and potatoes for them.
We have a couple of information items. 19A policy 5007 accelerated learners first reading and the FOIA report, June of 2025.
I liked what I read on the accelerated learners. I thought that was really well-written. The changes made in there as well, so.
Um, I actually had a concern because one of, one of the things that I brought up previously is I don't think there's enough advanced coursework for our dual-language kiddos, for our primarily Spanish-speaking kiddos. Just because you're not proficient, I keep clapping into the mic. Um, just because you're not proficient in English doesn't mean you're not a high performer. So I want to see some further language and the policy around that to ensure we are providing that for our dual-language students. Because, Mr. Chen, I'm sure you have kids who are excelling it and killing it and could use more rigorous coursework to prepare them for the next level of academia.
Yeah. And just to, um, if you have any suggestions, please put them in writing and get them to, uh, Mr. Alajakas.
So I just wanted to piggyback on that because I, that's a concern that I brought up before and I believe Ms. Ambrosio has, um, done some work around that. So maybe we can get, if Mr. Alajakas can give us, um, some more information on that. Because previously, yes, kids had to, uh, refuse EL services in order to accept, um, accelerated or, or gifted classes. So if we can get information on that work.
So I'm gonna ask any requested language changes. Be sure I'm on that email as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Fabian, can you please put that question in writing to us tomorrow? Because I didn't cap, I did capture it, but I'm a little confused about it. If you could just send it and then we'll get that for you.
Thank you. Okay. Any information items?
Can I just say I appreciate the information and feedback from the board members at first reading because that allows us the time to develop those thoughts out for you for second reading.
FOIA report?
Uh, this is just a summary of the work for the month. Um, if there are any particular questions, please email me because I don't have that document memorized.
Thank you. Twenty old business student support handbook 2025, 2026 second reading.
It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the student support handbook as presented for the second reading and authorize the administration to make any final technical changes such as page numbers, name updates, or email addresses.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Riddle to approve.
Second.
Second by Ms. Ramirez. A discussion on the motion.
Um, I'm going to be-
I'm going to be voting no on this, because the handbook didn't, in my perspective, really address our look-alike weapons conversation. I know Mr. Riddle had brought up these emotional impact or harm. That's not included. I disagree with this stance we're taking with look-alike weapons. But again, it's the majority of the board. So I'm not going to hold it up for a third reading, but that is why I will be voting no.
Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Fabian?
Yes.
Ms. Hannah? Ms. Lenzing?
No.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Ms. Ramirez?
Yes.
Mr. Riddle?
Yes.
President Rodriguez?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, 21, new business, Standing Committee Board Appointments. Okay, you saw the list that was in the board docs, and there was one error that I need to correct. Capital Improvement Committee, instead of it being Carolina Fabian, it should be Anita Hannah and Rick Riddle.
Okay.
So that was my error. Other than that, I had also mentioned to the board members that we were doing this, that if anybody had any other ideas, you know, once we, this motion was brought on the floor, that we could still discuss it if there's something that you really feel that you wanted to be considered for that you weren't. So first, I'd like to ask for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Mr. Riddle, second by Ms. Hannah. Any discussion on the motion? And the motion is with the, with the corrected Capital Improvement Committee.
Right.
The, the only thing I want to add is just ensuring that whoever on the admin team is coordinating the committee, be mindful of people's schedules, and have a virtual option as well.
And I'd also like to find out if we can get a schedule of the meeting, because we never seem to know when the meetings are.
Court President, you're in my head, because I think the last time we talked about this, we wanted to have the year's calendar worth, and not a month by month.
Yes.
Right.
Yep.
So Mr. Alajakis will be in charge of all committees and ensuring that calendars, so he is hearing your comments. And we will ensure that we are looking into all concerns.
Really quickly to add on to that, Superintendent, I know life happens, but I'm going to request, if there is going to be a cancellation of a committee meeting, that we have more than the mourning of, unless there's some extreme reason. I, I think everyone, and not just board members, everyone's time is important, and we should know and get a reminder that, yes, this is going forward, or really more so, this needs to be canceled. Having a reasonable amount of time, 24 hours, I think, is, is fair enough. But just so we can plan our day. Because I don't want to be in a meeting room, it's like, oh, it got canceled, five minutes before the start of the meeting. That's not fair.
Completely noted.
Any other discussion?
Nope, that's it, sorry.
Okay. And the other thing I want to point out, too, is that the committees are limited to two members, for a reason. And that is so that we don't violate the Open Meetings Act of having a majority of a quorum, which would be three, present at any meeting, and that would involve a lot of posting requirements, notices. So we have a motion and a second on the floor. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Fabian?
Yes.
Ms. Hannah?
Yes.
Ms. Lenzing?
Yes.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Ms. Ramirez?
Yes.
Mr. Riddle?
Yes.
President Rodriguez?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, we have other committees, and, oh, can we go back? Okay, that are not actually board committees, but board members have wanted to participate and have been requested to participate. So we have the Strategic Budget Committee with board member Nina Hannah, Carolina Fabian, Safety and Security Committee with Christine Lenzing, and FACE Advisory Board with Angela Ramirez. So those will continue to have the same board members participating. Okay? Thank you. Student discipline matters, there are none. 23, board member time. Okay, I'd like to start with Ms. Hannah.
I'd just like to say congratulations to Mr. Frankie and Ms. Treasure. Yes. And welcome aboard. If there's anything that, any questions you have, feel free to contact any of us. And we would, we will help you as much as we can. And we know that you're going to do a wonderful job as all of the rest of the student board members. And, you know, but welcome, welcome, to both of you.
Thank you. Ms. Lenzing?
I just wanted to say, it's really exciting that Caitlin's Kitchen is continuing to get broader recognition. And I love the initiative, right, for training our, our younger generations with self-sustainment, with growing your own food and learning how to cook healthy food. I know there's other community initiatives, like Hood to Table. They've been trying to get that going in Waukegan. So if you, as an adult, are interested, there are things happening on a larger community scale. So I encourage you to, to go seek out some information. I also want to give well wishes to our student board members. Ms. Bravo did an amazing job, and she was really engaged. I would just suggest that if you're interested in, like, doing more, wanting to get involved with some of the policy pieces, or as you're talking with other students, feel free to reach out to a board member, right? To say, hey, I have this idea, I'm not quite sure how to do it, just like, community organization did it with Ms. Fabian, please use us, right? It's not just sit here and be part of meetings. Like, if you have an idea, speak it, ask it, right? I also know we have our goal setting for next week. I would just like to know a little more context on why we're bringing in Dr. Friedman. It's something that we haven't done before, so it kind of caught me off-guard. But I will be attending the meeting, Mr. Alajakis. I just would like that context. And then the last component that I have is, we had recently put in a, oh, my brain is not working. With an, I wrote, goodness. I want to update on our, our tradition, right? So we, as a board, agreed that traditions are important within our community. I can't think of the, the word right, resolution, thank you. I'm like, it's not referendum, my brain's not working. So we had a resolution. So in part of that resolution, we are supposed to be getting, like, action plans and how it's going to be handled, right? We have lost some traditions, which our past board president specifically acknowledged. Dirty bird at games that really motivated our students. So I'd like an update on what our plans are to bring back traditions that were, I'm going to say, left to the side, and what we're doing with our students to see if there's any new traditions that they want to apply. So if we can get an update that, on that, that'd be great.
Thank you, Ms. Lenzing. Ms. Fabian?
I already talked a lot, I'm passing my time.
Ms. Allen?
That's you, Treasure?
Thank you very much. Mr. Hakobo?
Education. And yeah, thank you.
Ms. Ramirez?
Thank you. We have 20 days for school start. So I cannot believe how quickly the summer has gone. Yes, I do count days.
And the backpacks.
Because I'm handing out backpacks left and right, right now. So I'm really excited. And if that being said, I hope to see everybody Saturday at our resource fair, where we definitely will be giving out school supplies. And if you haven't registered your kid for school, please come and register, because that helps transportation and all the other wonderful stuff that goes on the first day of school. So yeah, 20 days, guys.
Oh, my gosh, yeah. Thank you. Mr. Riddle?
Yes. Thank you, Angela, for mentioning the Back to School Fair on Saturday. Very important. It's going to be a nice day. And our Lions Club will be out there as well, doing vision, hearing testing, and retinopathy testing. So get a chance, if you have any potential eye problems, you think, or hearing problems, check out the Lions Club event there. That was also going to be free. And Lions Club helps students that need help getting glasses or hearing aids. So if you do test positive, why come and see us, and we can help you. And again, welcome to our new student board members. And as Mr. Jeff McBride here mentioned to you, you are the voice of your prospective schools. And we really do want to hear from you and respect what you tell us, because you're in the schools every day. So please, let, let it be known to your fellow students that you are their voice, and come and tell us. And we definitely will listen to what you have to say. Thank you so much for being and volunteering your time here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riddle. Mr. McBride?
I'm looking forward to you administrators passing out hot dogs tomorrow Saturday. Also, be mindful of those that surround you, especially our seniors. It's going to be hot tomorrow.
Oh, yes.
I would advise everybody to stay tight.
Aye.
I agree.
You know what I mean.
We know what you mean.
Thank you, Mr. McBride.
Thank you.
Okay. And I just want to tell the new student board members how happy we are to have you. I think everybody else has pretty much expressed that. And you're looking at the time right now, it's almost 9:20, and you're thinking, gee, how long do these meetings go? And they don't always go this long. Sometimes they're long.
We apologize for you guys so late.
When, when it gets to be, during the school year, and, and I know there are going to be times when you have a lot of studying to do, or special projects to do. If you have to leave early, or for some reason you can't make a meeting, we will understand. But we do expect your commitment. But we also will be very understanding, because we want you to succeed. I know that the two of you, just from reading your resumes, you have a lot of other commitments, other things that you're involved in, which is very commendable. They also are very time-consuming. So, you know, just look, look at your, your commitments that you have and prioritize those that you don't, you know, if you have to leave, we'll understand. If you have to leave early at some time, just let us know.
Can I just add a note to the parents also, that thank you for staying the entire time. You don't have to, but we do welcome the support.
I bet they welcome.
Thank you. And at this time, I would like to ask for a motion to go back into closed session.
Motion. Second.
Do I have to state the reason again?
For the aforementioned reasons?
Okay, a motion to go into closed session for the matter of discussing legal matters, C1, specific personal employment, and C21, closed session minutes. I think that's all we have.
Fabian motion, Lenzing second.
We need a roll call vote.
Ms. Fabian?
Yes.
Ms. Hannah?
Yes.
Ms. Lenzing?
Yes.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Ms. Ramirez?
Yes.
Mr. Riddle?
Yes.
President Rodriguez?
Yes, motion carries. We are now in closed session. Thank you.